Six thirty. At six thirty, we're calling the meeting to order. And with that, would you please do roll call?
Hey, Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Wallace?
Here.
Commissioner Lynn?
Here.
And Commissioner Hamilton?
Here.
And then it looks like Michelle did not make it on to Zoom. So she let us know that if she didn't get on Zoom, she wouldn't be able to make it tonight.
Okay, she might let in sometime. Oops, it's over here tonight.
I know, this is the first week.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Um, looking if they'd like to have any community discussions this week or this meeting? Right? I'll take that as a no, and we'll move on to approval of meeting minutes. I didn't either. I noticed one place where there was an E R left off of Commissioner. Well, that's like, it's pretty obvious. So with that, I'll move to approve the minutes if nobody else has.
I'll second.
Hey, motion, oh, vote, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion carries. And with that, we have a visitor tonight. Welcome back, Steve. I'll let you introduce yourself and tell us what you're going to be presenting tonight.
Actually, the mayor asked me to introduce him.
Oh, okay. He's been around.
You folks probably know him better than I do, but uh, the city is, has uh, brought on a consultant, Mr. Steve Zets, who used to work as a planner for the city of Prosser, and now he's working as a planner for uh, the city of Seela. Um, but willing to offer his services at consultant rates to assist the city. This is the new half planners, myself and Zach, in our services and provide guidance. So, one of the first things that we asked Mr. Zets to do was today to uh, provide some guidance on the roles of the planning commission, especially in light of all of the new uh, state legislations that have come into place this last year. Um, a lot of those have really tied the city's hands. And with that, planning commission's hands on what can and cannot be um, conditions of approval, items that even go to the commission for approval. Um, quite a bit has happened this last year with, with the state legislature. So, Steve's here to provide some guidance for us. He will be attending our planning commission meetings. As we discussed at our last meeting, that's why we changed, changed to the days and time that we did. Um, so uh, we're really appreciative of, of what he's willing to offer for us and the guidance he's willing to provide. And um, I'm all ears as well. We've taken a lot of notes tonight. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome Mr. Zets.
Thank you, planning commission, and thank you for, for having me here. I will uh,
This is color union, Steve.
So I have some uh, handouts to follow along in the PowerPoint presentation I created. It is not a long, lengthy list of slides, but I would just ask uh, not to skip ahead. So because there are some things that tie in together, but uh, so I've got the ones, who are the note takers? I got the small slides with the notes. I've got uh,
Yeah.
Full on big slide.
I'll take a big slide.
Okay, well, we'll just patch these out.
I had to think there. Am I gonna lose my notes? Okay.
Perfect, okay. So um, I'll just do a, a little bit more of an introduction to kind of give, explain some of my background. So uh, I was a music major in college, which naturally led to me joining the army, which then naturally led to me going into law enforcement. So you can see why I ended up as a planner. Series of poor choices, right? Um, got into planning about nineteen years ago at the city of Prosser, was with them for nineteen years. Uh, started as their uh, actually setting up their code enforcement program. And then um, they said, hey, can you read land use books? And uh, and so it was a progression uh, that way. Um, had a lot of success with Prosser, my time there, and then a new opportunity opened up and uh, Seela uh, asked if I would come up there and, and, and uh, uh, assist them with some of their challenges uh, in planning. So tonight, um, what I wanted to talk about is really the basics and the fundamentals of of planning and how the planning commission and even the city council, this, this presentation works for both. How um, decision makers, which you are decision makers, how you are supposed to engage with these processes, what your roles and what your limitations are. And a lot of it is what um, what the courts have said. Uh, that is a, a lot of it. So, um, oh, good, the PowerPoint's up. Uh, so yeah, if you just start the um, presentation, I think it's the uh, s- uh, slide, yeah, yep, you can just click that one. You had it right. Yep, you can just hit play from the beginning. And we'll go to the first, uh, that's the first slide, really nice picture, great. Uh, but we'll go to the next slide, please. So, um, your role is, is dealing with land use in the Growth Management Act. And, and there's uh, the definition of what land use is, it refers, it's very basic. What do, how do we as a society utilize our land and what rules we make uh, to apply uh, to those situations? Um, your function as the planning commission usually deals with things like comprehensive plans, zoning subdivisions. And then to a lesser extent, conditional use permits or planned developments. And I'll explain kind of the difference between an actual subdivision and a planned development, which you might already know uh, within your code. And then, of course, text amendments. Um, you may uh, sometimes encounter those. And if anytime during this uh, presentation, you have questions, feel free to shout them out. Um, uh, next slide, please. So this is where we're gonna start just diving right in, getting into the meat of it. There are typically two different uh, types of actions that you will be dealing with. One is legislative. This is in essence, the creation of the rules. The other is quasi judicial, which is the application of those rules to distinct uh, processes. Legislative um, processes are typically very fluid and discretionary. So when you're creating your comp plan, that is a legislative process when you're deciding what should go into it. Um, when you're making up rules about something, say subdivisions, and you're, and you're, you're trying to create a new ordinance for subdivisions or something, that is typically legislative. And so you can have broad discretion in in how you deal with legislative issues because they're not rules yet that are, uh, people are expected to abide by. And so when you are dealing with legislative issues, you do not have to explain yourself, uh, if you make a decision that, you know, uh, say, for example, you're deciding on whether to allow RVs to be parked in the front setback. And uh, whether it's a text amendment that somebody has brought forward, or it's just an action that uh, the council has directed the planning commission to review. If it's legislative and you're just not interested in, in, in proceeding with it, you don't necessarily have to create findings. It's a legislative decision. And of course, the council, as you are the recommended body, the council can, of course, establish their own determination. Um, and we'll get back to a little bit of, of that. Quasi judicial requires findings. Um, and there are the two portions of that are the open record, which is typically done before you as the planning commission, and then the closed record hearing, which is typically done uh, at the council level. Um, the closed record hearings, no new testimony can be entered into the record. It can be appellate arguments only. In other words, if there was some sort of procedural error that was done, or some sort of uh, legal reason why something should, should or shouldn't be happening, that's the only new information. Now, you typically won't hear a closed record hearing, but just providing you that information on the, the difference. And uh, some of the key things that you're going to want to establish, when you are holding the open record meeting, you want to establish a clean record. And there's a slide dedicating to all of the things that you should do to establish a clean record. Um, and that is, the reason for that is to avoid challenges. Your record is what will go to court, not what you say after the hearing, not what you've put together, um, you know, after the fact. The record is what the courts will look at whenever there's litigation. Um, your scope of the review is limited, and typically your, the scope of what you can do is spelled out in your municipal code. And uh, and then the question, well, can decision makers be held personally responsible? The answer is yes. Decision makers can be held personally responsible, and I'll get to what that means um, i- in a little bit. Any, any questions on the difference between legislative and quasi judicial? And I know some of this might seem, you know, redundant, um, but it is important to establish some of the base rules when we get into the next couple of slides. So.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You might know, because you've probably been here longer to us. Has the city ever been city challenged on one of their findings or one of their? Do you know?
I don't, I don't know if Benton City has. I know, I can tell you that Prosser was very close uh, to a situation and, and it was actually public record, but it was between uh, the Catholic Charities in the school district. And unfortunately, the city was the decision maker in between. And uh, yeah, and so I don't know of whether Benton City has ever had a Lupa appeal or, you know, a, a takings claim or anything like that. I've not heard of one since I've been here, but.
So do you, the reason I'm asking, I kinda, I think that's a great, you know, look at cases like that to understand what happened and how they were resolved. Because it sounds like the one in Prosser was, was it resolved in court or pre-court?
It was resolved pre-court. So I had to uh, on one side of the uh, spectrum, I had the school district saying that they wanted half a million dollars um, for this development as an impact fee. And on the other side, I had the Catholic Charities group saying, that's way outside of what's reasonable for the project. They hired their attorneys, school district hired their attorneys, and I had to hire my attorney to uh, make sure that I was on good legal ground. I drafted the mitigation. Um, my attorney reviewed that mitigation, said, I think it works. It was given to both legal sides, and they both agreed that they could not find anything, either side could find any fault in my methodology. And so they abided by the uh, deal. But that was a, that was probably the closest I've been to an actual litigation, other than watching it from afar for other jurisdictions. And I do have some examples of that. Talked about Clealum and some of the other cities uh, that have fallen into what I call the pitfalls of planning. So.
Well, congratulations on your case. Good work.
Yeah, I didn't, uh, yeah, Catholic charities, they pulled out, uh, they didn't pull out any punches. They hired Perkins Coie, which is like the largest law firm in the country. So. So yeah, these things can be uh, contentious for sure. So this is probably one of my favorite slides. It is uh, right at the top. Know by what authority you act. Um, any decision that you're going to make, whether you think it's just recommendation and that the, the city council is going to solve it, or if anything is incorrect, every decision that you make, you must know by what authority you act. Your authority is covered right there. Your municipal code, your comp plan, your RCW, your WAC, your federal law, your state law, your uh, the growth hearings board, um, and all of your long-term plans. Has anyone read the Benton City's water plan? I haven't. I'm not going to. But these are all of the regulations that are contained within, that, that grant you the authority to do what, what it is that you're doing. And so it's impossible for any one person to have all that knowledge unless they're just really bored. Um, and they want to go read all of this stuff. Uh, and so it's important to make sure that if you're not sure, to ask questions of your attorney or your planner, or somebody um, uh, to know what authority you truly do have. Um, Growth Management Act, that uh, little graphic there, that just shows the basic, the three primary things that lead you to a decision. The Growth Management Act, which is all encompassing of all uh, growth management in Washington, your local codes, and then case law, which is the resolution that took place in court. Um, typically case law is set and established by either a superior court ruling or a um, state Supreme Court, or in a lot of cases, the SCOTUS, the Supreme Court of the United States. And so I always, the, the know by what authority you act is not just for planning commissioners. It was also taught to police officers and everybody else who does things with uh, the, the law behind them, that they have to know that they're on good, solid ground with their actions. So, next slide, please.
I have to ask before we move on. I never like my ignorance. What is the growth hearings board? Is that federal, state, local?
No, so the growth hearings board is um, where you would file a, say, for example, an appeal. Uh, the growth hearings board would hear that. It's a Washington state organization. Yeah, it's a state level uh, to hear specifically appeals to land use decisions. But um, keep in mind, those decisions can skip to federal court. They can skip to superior court. But, and the growth hearings board does a lot of work, and they used to put out a journal of their decisions. And I didn't find it very useful. I, I felt the bigger ticket cases were more useful, but you can read all of their decisions online, and there's quite a few of them.
And I could just look it up.
Yeah, you can just look it up.
Hearings for Washington.
Washington State Growth Hearings Board. I think there was an eastern and a western.
Okay, okay, that's great. Yeah.
So I've never dealt with them. I've never had anything go to them. So uh, and I don't even know who's on the board. So, but uh,
Are you gonna be involved in the um, comprehensive plan, the new one?
Uh, I'm not, not sure yet on what my role with the city and all of that is uh, yet. But um, we'll certainly talk about that behind scenes, and I'm sure that they'll uh, let, let you all know.
Because we kind, we were going by the, it's a little unclear, but we were going by the issue with the people like with Seven Ends and River Road stop, that type of thing. And the comprehensive plan basically said, you know, whatever this, there is similar in the neighborhood, basically, because they wanted to go, they wanted to build a lot of houses in there. And um, and so they wanted in our two versus the agriculture.
Exurban.
Exurban, yes, thank you. And so um, you know, but then we got over road. And by city council then came back, we made same decision because the comprehensive plan basically says what's in the same, but then you know, I guess that, that was considered a gray area. So it makes it hard sometimes to, to make a decision.
It does. And hopefully, um, when we get into the, the differences between your comp plan and your zoning map, that some of that might come into more focus with how your comprehensive plan drives your zoning code. Um, but, eh, eh, but as far as the specifics of the, that particular case, I'm not familiar with it. So I don't want to comment on it until I know more um, about that one. But uh, yeah. Would love to dig into that and, and find out. But let's talk about Nolan Dolan. Have you all heard that before? Okay, I haven't talked about it a lot. Nolan Dolan are two Supreme Court cases, which basically established the role that governments have when it comes to land use, and it limits the government's authority on what they can and can't do. Nolan versus California Coastal Commission, Dolan versus City of Tigard. And then we'll talk about the one on the bottom, which is a new case that just came out. So Nolan Dolan, as you see there, it's a foundational concept that talks about regulatory takings or constitutional takings. And what this is uh, is uh, like you see up there on the slide, it's, it requires a two-part test. So what happened in the um, Nolan case of, or sorry, Dolan case was a uh, basically a hardware store in the city of Tigard, Oregon. They wanted to expand their building in their parking lot. And the city came along and said, that's great. You can do that. The zoning allows it. But you also have to give us a bike path, a pedestrian trail, and dedicate um, this creek land along your, your store. And they said, hmm, why do I have to do all that to, to expand my business, which is allowed by zoning? And so they took it to court, and it went all the way up to the Supreme Court of the United States. And the Supreme Court says, yes, the government, you have overreached. Uh, the same thing happened with um, in the uh, Nolan case. That was uh, actually a single family residence um, that they wanted to build, and the city said, or, or the, I think it was the county commissioners, they said, yes, you can build your house. Uh, but you need to dedicate land, and part of your beachfront needs to be now made public access. And they said, huh, we don't think that's fair. We don't want to give up our land. And uh, so they took it to court. They actually lost it at the appeals court, and it wasn't until the Supreme Court stepped in that they actually, Supreme Court says yes. And this is where, so the oftentimes you'll hear Nolan Dolan, the two court cases that establish that a city or jurisdiction must establish a nexus or a reason for the government action or for the government's request. This is especially true of off-site improvements. That was the whole uh, point in the crux of it is within a subdivision or development, yes, you can require streets and sidewalks and um, those sorts of actions. But once you start asking for things that are outside the property with which they're doing, you have to establish this two-part test. What is the government's interest in it? And is that what you're asking for? Is it proportional to the impacts that they are creating? So if you, for example, and, and if you had an old county road, it was just beat up, and the city annexed it, and it's been still a county road for a long time, and a subdivision, subdivision comes in, and they're tying into what used to be a county road, but is now a city road. And the city says, oh, we'd like to, uh, we'd like you to improve that frontage of that all the way down to, you know, at least a half mile or a mile. Uh, that could be considered an uh, unconstitutional exaction. You're, you're asking for more. It was already deficient road. Uh, do they have to bring, should they have to bring it up to standard? Typically, your frontages. Uh, now, there, there are exceptions to that, but they, they need to be taken on a case-by-case basis. So say, for example, it's a gravel road, and they want to put in a paved subdivision and and they have all this traffic on a gravel road that's not going to be able to accommodate it. That, that may not fall within that test because there, you know, you have a government interest in it. But again, it depends on the two-part test. So the Sheets case versus Eldorado County was a case in which uh, a person wanted to put in a manufactured home on their property. And the, the county says, that's great. Uh, you can do that. But our commissioners passed this law that says that anybody who's building or developing out here has to pay twenty-five thousand dollars to this road fund for future projects. And it, they said, of course, the gentleman said, well, hey, that doesn't follow the Nolan Dolan rule. They said, oh, uh-huh, but it is not a bureaucrat sitting behind a desk making these decisions or a planning commission. It was passed by law by the commissioners. So therefore, it's exempt from Nolan Dolan because it was legislatively created, this rule to pay that. Supreme Court came back and said, nice try, unanimous decision, no. Uh, whether your legislative body, your city council or commissioners pass a law requiring payment is no different than, say, a planner sitting behind a desk saying, thou shall do this. So they said, no exemption. Uh, you still are subject to the Nolan Dolan test, uh, which is that two-part exaction. So, and I can't give you enough cases and uh, examples to cover everything that you're going to see. In fact, I could spend all night here talking about all of these different cases, but each one that you're going to see is going to be unique. And so you just have to keep this in mind when you're establishing conditions of approval eh, uh, on any sort of quasi judicial action. So, yeah.
Okay, so like, I mean, these developments and stuff, they're either expected to donate X amount of lots for a park or pay a fee. Does that fit fall within that?
Well, that is uh, so the desire or the need for people to recreate within a subdivision is certainly a government interest. Has an interest of that. And if you're doing a hundred lot subdivision, dedicating an acre to of a park place is not outside the scope of being unreasonable. So, but again, those are case-by-case basis. Uh, it, it could be by the, say, for example, um, you know, it's a ten-lot subdivision, and your code requires that, you know, I think, I'm not sure, but I think your code allows for either or.
Yeah, it does. It's sad because the, the or, they had to pay anything compared to what if they, the lot value.
Mm-hmm. And you can change that by requiring it, or, or at least leaving the decision. Uh, some jurisdictions allow for that, but it's not up to the developer to decide whether they want to pay in lieu of. So um, those are things that you could fix uh, within your code to make the uh, jurisdiction or the, the uh, decision makers decide whether they will allow that. And in most cases, the payment in lieu of for park space is discretionary, and the council does typically have the authority to deny that in the interest of whatever, as long as the exaction is proportional to the development. So if you're asking for twenty acres in a thirty-acre development, way over the line there. So.
Well, no, because they're putting up behind Cardi Market. They're putting like two hundred and fifty-three houses in there. And I, I had kind of figured out a little bit that they could turn a couple here, different ways and stuff, and donate a couple of small lots because they're really small, um, up there, you know, to have something for the kids. Can you imagine two hundred and fifty-three kids, you know, most families that have no place to play, where they have to um, you know, pay, you know, crossroad to get to the park over there.
Yeah, and.
So they got away with just paying a little bit of money.
And again, that, that can be uh, because you're taking a more regional approach. So uh, think, keep in mind that if you, it, it doesn't mean that those decisions were wrong by any means. Uh, somebody paying in lieu of just means that that money has to, has to be used for a park improvement. But say you have uh, another development that goes in, and then another development goes in, they all contribute to it. And now you can get a regional park to serve all of those, which is typically in the parks and rec world, and I don't want to speak for any, anybody here, but you, you, you want, it's easier to maintain a one park than tot lots, which can be expensive to drag mowers around. I've also seen HOAs that have agreed to maintain those, and they are not maintained very well. So there's some strategies that go beyond the planning commission and the council. It also goes to your public works folks and your parks folks and your parks plans. So um, that may be a, you know, I can't, I don't want to speak to the those specific issues, but that, there's sometimes more to why something is done or not done than just whether the kids now have a tot lot to play on, or whether there's something in the future. So I can't speak to what the city's long-range plans are for recreation. But um, the, the point of all of this with the with explaining Nolan Dolan is because it is often, this is one of the pitfalls that folks fall into. Whether it be a planning commission or a city council, or even a, a planner, or, or some other decision maker is not understanding that while it may sound good to say, yeah, we'd like you to uh, repave this entire road, you know, for three miles to serve your twenty-lot subdivision. Sounds good on paper. It's not necessarily constitutional, and it can get you into a lot of trouble. Um, and we're, we're getting into the, the ah, uh, portion of the presentation. So, um, let's just recap kind of what we got with the next slide, please. So, and um, when I say next slide again on this one, I'll just have you actually click the slide, and we'll break something up, but not yet. So this is just an example of a subdivision that I found online. And what, looking at this, and just assuming that it's a road, what, what do you think you would be looking at or looking for in your review if this was before you as, as a planning commission? Toss out some of the things you might look at.
The width of the road.
With the road?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm thinking like emergency response or, you know, activation would be nightmare. I, that's, I wouldn't allow it myself.
Maybe lot size? Is it gonna meet your code?
Oh.
Yeah, it's, it's very, yeah, it's very small, but.
Yeah.
But what are the things? So we got roads, we've got access. What are some of the other things that you might look at if it was coming before you?
Water supply.
Yep, can it be served by utilities? Excellent.
Sidewalk.
So, yeah, or is there walkability within the community? Is that consistent with your long-term plans? Anything else?
There's no park.
Recreation.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't, we don't know. We can't tell if there's a park, you know, across the road or something within walking distance. But yeah, can you tap the image now?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so there we go. Open space, easements, density, water sewer, access, existing easements. What's already there? Are you impacting anything? Lot sizes and LOS, that is your level of service. And all of your roads, uh I I would assume you have an LOS. Okay, um your roads have a level of service established. And within your comp plan or your your streets plan. And so you'll want to look, is the traffic created by this development going to drop the level of service on the uh surrounding roads? If so, you can require mitigation for that. However. I've seen a lot of folks over my tenure. The first thing they bring up with any development, regardless of how big or small it is, is the amount of traffic that's going to be on the roads. Well, roads are built to handle a lot of traffic. And unless that level of service has truly fallen below the levels that's established and is acceptable. It is very difficult to use that as a basis for denial or for improvement.
Would that require an actual impact study by a certified consultant?
No, yeah, you would, you could require any subdivision application if you weren't sure about the LOS. You can always require a traffic impact study. And that will um typically tell you whether the amount of traffic generated will drop that level of service.
Responsible for paying for that?
The developer.
Okay, I think.
So now, this could potentially be something the planning commission could condition a plat if it wasn't available. But typically upfront, you're going to want your staff to let the developers upfront know. This application needs to come with a traffic impact analysis or either a TIA, traffic impact analysis or a full-blown traffic study. And.
That could include the uh with other roads going through.
It 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 will include basically the surrounding area of the subdivision. It'll look at what they're proposing, how many trips a day, probably using the ITE manual, um which, sorry, I'm.
And drainage.
I'll just put a quarter in the acronym jar. Sometimes I use acronym, so if you don't. ITE stands for international traffic engineers. It's the a manual that they put out that basically is a amount. Uh an amalgamation of all these engineers that say, we think that apartments are generating this much traffic. We think a grocery store is generating this much traffic.
So. You said international rather than national. I mean, it's not US-based. This is the. Insurrection of engineers. Oh, boy.
Yeah, well, yes, we have the World Series in baseball, but we are the only ones to play. So similar to the international building codes.
Exactly, it's all international.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, yeah.
So it's my understanding, so some of these places that are building, um. Whether they're putting double wires or houses or this type of thing, they're saying, um, the city's saying that they gotta put in um. Like sidewalks and stuff, but the rest of the street doesn't have sidewalks. So where does that fall on there?
So that's okay. Doing your frontage improvement within anything is the way that you honestly get your sidewalks built. Um there are two ways to do it, requiring it at the time of development or an individual or waiting. And until you do like some sort of local improvement district or something like that where you do them all at once. Uh I can tell you from experience, you can go to Google Earth, twenty twenty-one, Prosser, Kinney Way. About the nine hundred block, thousand block, getting pretty close to Highway twenty-two. And you will see a brand-new duplex with sidewalk that goes to nowhere. Um I did that. I required that as part of a condition of of approval. A- as part of meeting the code requirements that frontage must be built. Now, everyone thought it was crazy, but guess what? The sidewalk now is fully built and and developed, so you you can. You you have the choice uh on on how you do things and so. Um but it is not wrong. There's no wrong way to to get those sort of connective pieces. Uh and honestly, sidewalk costs and curb and gutter and uh you know, th- those are. Not onerous requirements. They're pretty standard across the board. Now, had we said, had I told this same person that was building the duplex that he had to pave the quarter mile down to the aquatic center. Or or make a sidewalk down there, that would have been unreasonable and I would have violated the Nolan Dolan test. Because yes, there's a government interest to have our children walking safely down Kinney Way to the aquatic center. But I would have exceeded my authority in that the um impact was not proportional to what we were. What we would have been requiring, so. Yeah, but good questions. Um anything else on this one? So this is kind of what you're looking for in your um subdivisions? It's all stuff you clearly know, because you all shouted them out. Uh but we're we're going to get into the pitfalls next, so.
And can I clarify, Steve, because we're we're learning as well that most of this would come as as, is it referred to as a finding of fact? That, you know, as as the city, we're already looking at these things and providing this information to the commission. We're saying we've already reviewed lot sizes, they meet our BCMC. We've already reviewed existing easements, new easements, access and all of that, so.
Yep.
Um generally, when something like this comes to a commission, all of this has already been summarized.
Correct.
And if there's any concerns or issues, that's when those things are brought up.
Yep.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Typically, yes, you you as the staff will be bringing to them a complete package that you've already. And you've already, basically, if you haven't already drafted findings in support of uh or in denial of you, you're. You already have everything that you need to establish those findings. So everything you would have here doesn't meet the open space. Does it, is it going to impact the LOS of the surrounding? Is the density meet the code? All of those are your findings that you will establish in your record.
And then again, we're, it's falling back on our code because the the previous slide was like, we're, what authority are we standing on? So everything that we're reading already falls back on the authority that we have as a city, their code or state or or.
Yep.
Kind of combination of all different codes, city code, fire code, building code.
All of those, and because they're, you're normally your decision-makers, your your legislative bodies are not the experts in those fields. They're dependent on you to bring them all of that and tell them, yes, it meets the fire code, yes, it meets this, yes, access can be met.
Right.
So and that and that is where you're going to create your good record that you can stand on. Now, doesn't mean it can't be undone by a legis, you know, legislative body saying, yeah, we don't agree with you. But uh I'll get to that on the clean record side. Talks about, well, then it, they would have to establish a record of their decision, so. So, oh yay, pitfalls, got some, just doing a Google search. I mean, I'm sure everyone is familiar with what happened in Clealum. They are now filing bankruptcy. Uh twenty, I think they're up to twenty-five million dollar judgment. Um and they're, and that's collecting twelve percent interest a month, I believe, so they can't even afford to pay the interest. Uh they, um and so they are looking to file bankruptcy, but that does not shield them from the exact or from the amount. So not to scare anyone, but yes, to scare everybody. Uh land use is, can be one of the most uh costly things that a a city does, especially a small jurisdiction. Uh you see Las Vegas is getting ready to settle six hundred and thirty-six million dollars. Thankfully, they have a few casinos there to help them pay that, pay that down. Um and and then individual planning commissioners can be held liable or city council people based on their decision. So uh I I I typed this up, government officials, including planning commissioners. Typically have some protection from lawsuits under the doctrine of qualified immunity, which is true. You are shielded from your lawful acts. You're not shielded if you step outside of your lawful act, uh which is knowing the authority by what 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 authority you act. Um a- and it says, as long as their conduct doesn't clearly establish statutory or constitutional violations. And so what that means is trust your staff, ask questions, trust your instinct as well. Um a a lot, a lot of what I see in planning commission meetings, both here and all the other jurisdictions I've ever gone to. And and watched their meetings is uh you you often have an audience that is not in favor of a particular. Subdivision or an action that you're considering. It's your function to put all of those feelings aside and to act on behalf of the entire city. Because at the end of the day, while the speeches may come, oh, this is, you know, all of the children are going to. You you know, suffer and and all of that, that is not really. Not to say that those, that there shouldn't be concerns with that, but.
I think that's why we have a planning commission.
Yeah. Your 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 planning commission ne- needs to look at the city as a whole to include what happens if you get the city sued. As Clealum is finding out, so that 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 there will, that the courts, you do not care. Uh how many people, I don't know what the population of Clealum is, but they are all going to suffer. Their property values are going to suffer and the only but person that that wins is the developer and the attorneys. So keep that in mind that while your decision may be unpopular, if you are following the law and staying within your scope of authority. You are doing what's right for these citizens. They just don't know it and that's okay. You'll go home at the end of the day knowing that what you did was right because you can see what happens if you step outside that authority. So um any questions about some of these cases? The Clealum one I've been kind of watching, it's an interesting case. Uh I'll give you the short version if you want it.
Hardly get to get out of that.
They are not.
Well, what what do you do? Just dissolve as a city? I mean, what what do you?
Well, I hate to see what their water bills look like next year, so or. Proper, I, yeah, I have no clue how.
I just can't comprehend what's happened to the city.
Yeah, so their operating budget is about five million dollars a year and this is five times, so.
Yeah.
Um they're, they're going to have to, uh and it's my understanding too that now the developer has access. And is garnishing their uh their finances, yeah, their checking account. Yep, so, yeah, so the important thing is not to get there. So what happened in the Clealum case, the very short version of it is, is that they, this developer had entered into an agreement with a past council. Passed whatever to do this twenty-five-year-long stretched-out development. Um new folks got in there and when they started to actually develop again, they said, well, we didn't get a park here. And we didn't get this here and we didn't get that there, but the contracts were already made. And so the city did some things that were probably not on the up and up as far as delaying permitting. And inspections and doing this other things that the developer was able to document in court. And so they they lost uh. Um and yeah, and there is no way out, unfortunately, and 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 the sad thing is, is that there's a lot of. Folks up there who had nothing to do with these decisions that are going to pay for for those mistakes. So I call it pitfalls, it's also a warning. Do right, know by what authority you act. So any questions on this?
Okay, when you say to follow your instincts, because we've had a few developers come in here that are kind of slimy and your instincts just tell you that they're slimy. And they're they're wide-eyed to your face to hear what, so that it gets approved and then they start changing their mind and stuff afterwards. And you know, that causes problems with the people that weren't in favor in the first place, because it's in their neighborhoods and stuff. But you know, that that's, that's really difficult because we've we've seen a few, quite a few of those lately. And so that's really.
Yes, so developers, they don't have to be uh on the up and up, there's no requirement uh for that. But i- it matters not whether it's a development, a developer testifying before you. Or it's a a concerned citizen testifying before you. You already have all the tools at your disposal to make the right decision. Everything that you need is within your municipal code uh on a subdivision, what you can and can't do. So the testimony, what you're really listening for in the testimony that you're being given is uh anything that you might have missed. Anything that staff might have missed that's pertinent to that application. Not the what-ifs, not the, you know, whatever the developer's promising, uh you know, not to. My history with uh developers sometimes is, uh the one I always like is the storage unit guys. So the every one that comes in and says, I'm going to build a storage unit and it's going to be the super-nice storage unit and all that other stuff. And at the end of the day, it's a cinder block building that's storing people's stuff. So there's only so much you can do with that and that, and and you know what? I'm not interested in how nice you can make your storage units. I'm interested in whether it's the zoning will be met, the the fire um. Code will be met, um access, all of that. That's what you should be focused on, not the distractions that a developer's telling you to sweeten the deal. Because at the end of the day, that testimony doesn't matter. The same with a citizen who's coming in and saying, well, I just don't like this project. Or it's going to create too much traffic on my road. Well, did that level of service go down? Did, if it didn't, if the level of service wasn't altered, then it's not something that you can consider. Uh so again, everything you need to do to review one of these applications like we had up on the screen, you already have, whether people come here or not. And you should be doing that, whether people come to testify or not, or even whether the developer is here, does it meet your code? Now, as a planning commission, if there's things about your code that you don't like, you can certainly uh take steps, working with staff. Working with your mayor, working with your council to go, hey, can we change this? Can we review this? Can we do things? So you can always amend your code. Uh think of the municipal code or any of the code as uh rules of the game. And so at the, at the time that somebody submits an application, that's what the, that's the time that they are vested. So uh not only under the city's rules, but under the international building code, because that changes every three years. So uh you'll often find when the codes are getting ready to change, everyone's rushing in to get their application in so that they can be under the old code. Before they get their new code. And so um what happens when you pass go in Monopoly? You get two hundred bucks, right? It's in the rules. Municipal code is the same way. Don't change the rules unless you've done so officially and followed it. So that's all a developer is really doing or should be doing is presenting something that follows the rules. And if it doesn't, your first line of defense is uh to call that out is your staff, your local members, and then you, and then the council. And of course, your attorneys and all that. So it's basically a test. Did they follow the rules in their application? Did they meet everything that was in our rulebook? You can't change the road or the rules midstream, so that's important to.
So if they choose to, they come, say, they come across the planning commission this year, but they choose not to do any construction. For three or four more years, they fall under the code that was here now or back then, which you're telling me.
Building, yeah, good question. So the plat would fall under the rules that it was approved by. However, the building or the construction of the homes, that doesn't isn't established until they actually apply for a building permit. And they can't do that until the plat's established after final plat. So and the state, the RCW says that a preliminary plat, so that's what comes to you first. They say, hey, we want to take this thirty acres and we want to turn it into a hundred lots. And you review it and then it goes, uh you know, it's approved, then they have five years to do all of the infrastructure improvements. The roads, the whatever is necessary, or bond it, depending on how your code works. And then come back to for final plat. Final plat is at that point what actually creates the lots. They don't exist until final plat happens. So once final plat happens, they are established lots. And they would then need to apply for individual building permits for each of those lots, just like anybody else. And at the time that they apply for that building permit is when they would vest. So they could certainly sit on a preliminary plat for four years, build it and whatnot. But it's not going to help them because they don't get to go back in time and apply the the old building codes. It's still, it's at the time that they apply for whatever the action is, so. Um.
Question for clarity, so if the city or the county commission gets sued. Does the entire co- commission and commission get sued? Do we all get pulled into it or just the people that voted for the bad job or whatever decision?
That is, I believe, totally dependent on the person filing the suit, who they named.
Okay, so that's not clarified in the law or wow, so you're really out there.
Yeah, so clearly, uh with experience on some of those cases that we saw, they named the jurisdictions. Specifically because that's where they're going to most likely get their money. Uh individual planning commissioners being sued is typically just. Specifically because that's where they're going to most likely get their money. Uh, individual planning commissioners being sued is typically just. There, there's not a a high expectation, uh, my understanding, but, um. It it has happened. Uh, there was a case. In Idaho with a, it's like a halfway house or something that they wanted to build, the planning commission denied it. Uh, and, um, and of course they got sued because there was no basis to deny it. It met the, the code. They just didn't want it.
Right.
Um, and and some things are, you know, a small community wouldn't like, for example, um. What's something that's constitutionally exotic dancing and a, 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 a strip club? Most small jurisdictions and small towns, they don't want that on their main street. However, it is constitutionally protected activity. It's covered under the First Amendment. And so a city may not, they can regulate it, but they can't do so to the point where it's basically. Not allowed, so.
You were here, weren't you, when we went through the big hubbub about the lot shop they wanted to build here in town? How did? How come? Because it was legal, how come? It wasn't allowed in the city because that was, you know, was legal and the regs were there. How did, were they able? Because it's same thing as the.
Well, sort of, the, the, um, exotic dancing made its way all the way up to the Supreme Court. Marijuana is illegal federally, so there was no court protection for it. Yeah, and so. It was all gray area and it still is today, um, where the state can certainly say. Sure, you can. And the state, uh, to be fair. Did not impose its will on jurisdictions and they let each jurisdiction figure it out because of that federal.
Okay.
Um, prohibition on on marijuana is still in play. I don't think it's, uh, Schedule One narcotic anymore. I think they moved it to Schedule Two. Um, but yeah, but that's why that was the the difference. But if, you know, somebody wanted to come in and open up exotic dancing. You, I don't know that you could, could stop them. So. And that also goes back to some other interesting cases with, uh, sign codes too. The Reed versus Gilbert Arizona, great case. Anyway, sorry, I'm gonna nerd out on my case. So I I also wrote this, a planning commissioner must set aside personal feelings and the feelings of their friends, family and neighbors. To ensure that the rule of law, not the rule of mob, is followed in all land use matters that come before them. And again, I explained why this is important regardless of whether you have everybody that you know up here saying, don't do this. If you don't have the legal authority to do so, don't, uh, fall into the the traps of Clealum. Or, uh, these other jurisdictions. So creating a clean record is how best to protect yourself and the city. When it comes to these sorts of actions. Quasi judicial, I'm only gonna focus on that because the legislative stuff is fluffy and you can kinda do what you want. Uh, but quasi judicial is not. So establish meeting rules. Uh, that that is clear within your your body, establish some rules. Uh, it doesn't necessarily have to follow Robert's rules of order. Um, you know, I I leave that up to staff and the mayor and and them to guide you on how best. But you should have, uh, rules in place on how you do things. Read your packet. Uh, hugely important, read your packet ahead of time. Disclose conflicts. Do you do conflict statements at the beginning? Okay, that's good, under the doctrine of necessity and all that.
Good at that. You guys should remind me, because I don't usually ask that question. So.
So I would put that in your packet is having some standard language that you read on these quasi judicial matters. It can, uh, it's very. Very simple, usually just a paragraph that, um, talks about the appearance of fairness doctrine and the other things that go along with that. Just discussing your expertise, uh, contact or disclosing that. And remember. It's a small town. You're most likely gonna know, depending on who it is, that, you know, there's a good chance that you're gonna know the developer. And they might be a friend of yours. That doesn't mean that you have to recuse yourself. The important piece of that is. Uh, cause obviously if everybody knows the person, you can't not have a quorum to decide the matter. So you simply have to disclose. How you know this person and then reiterate that you have not pre-decided the matter. This is very important. Um, uh, this is one of those pitfalls. I didn't put it in my slide, but it happens a lot. If you say things on the record that appear that you have pre-decided the matter, like, oh, I went jogging by there and and I didn't like that. You've pre-decided the matter and you just put it on the record. And, um, that can be used against you, whether your decision is on good, solid ground or not. So. A clean record is so important.
Um, I wanna make sure this, you know, because I know everybody. So when they, somebody comes up and they're sitting there with the, as an applicant. I need to acknowledge and say, I know this person and I've not talked to them. I mean, please add clarity to that for me personally.
Yeah, well, uh, during your opening statement where you're asking if there's any conflicts and you ask the audience, does any member of the audience believe that anybody up here has a conflict? Nobody says that, you're you're covered. You can.
So it, that, that's enough. I just.
It's impossible not to know people in a small town.
Yeah.
The the important part of that question is, did you talk about this application? And did you pre-decide the matter? And if the the answers to that are no, a- and nobody's asking for you to recuse yourself, then you should be good.
And so we've got a lot of stuff that's going on Facebook. People just rage out there. And I apparently I'm not on all the right sites, but I've seen them talking about some planning stuff. And I stepped up and said, you come to the meeting, because they're like, everything's already pre-decided. And I just put it out there, I put a comment, you know, come to the meeting, you will be heard. Is that expertise communication?
It is not necessarily expertise because you are not saying anything other than inviting folks to a meeting. However. I would caution against it just because, um, somebody could say, well, she's been, uh, following all of the, the talk on this. And that, you know, you you don't wanna muddy the waters. And so the Facebook and all these anti-social media. Sorry, social media platforms. Yeah. So, um, that, yeah, it is best not to engage as a planning commissioner, other than maybe just saying that, hey, you know, uh. Come to the meeting, don't acknowledge. And that goes to the next, uh, portion of it, uh, of the next bullet point is. Take testimony, don't give it. When people are coming up here to testify, let them testify. There, a lot of times, and this happens all, they wanna ask you questions. Well, what is the developer gonna do? Well, what about this? And they want, they're asking questions. It is not your job to respond or to solicit that information. You're simply there to hear the testimony. And you can simply say, you know, I can't answer your questions. I'm here to take your testimony. Please continue. Uh, you know, you got two minutes left or whatever. Um, and that is to, again, to establish a clean record because it is, it is, again, you're supposed to take testimony, don't give it. A- and avoid, or you can ask clarifying questions, which is up there, and avoid sharing opinions. Do not share your opinions like, oh, I totally understand. I don't like to have a whole bunch of cars driving by my house either. That's offering an opinion and testimony. You're you're adding to the record and that is not what you should be doing. Um, and discuss only that what you are hearing. Now, this is one of the hardest things to do. It, uh, in the world of planning, because everybody wants to talk about a project. So when you hear a subdivision, you wanna know about what are the houses gonna look like? What is, you know, what are, what are the, how many stories? Uh, is, are they gonna be duplexes? Are they gonna be multifamily? You're, um, or or a commercial development, you're like, well, what's going in there? Um, and that is not the purview of the planning commission. You are simply there to ascertain whether zoning. Or, uh, the division of land or whatever the action is. It is very difficult to get. Folks who are testifying also to understand that. You don't have to, you can just take testimony and disregard those things which are not pertinent. Um, and and you have to. A lot of the testimony that's gonna come before you is, uh, not relevant. Uh, to what it is that you're hearing. And so think of yourselves, it is a quasi judicial. You are judges. Think of yourselves dressed up in black robes and, uh, hearing the matter. Judges typically don't, uh. Engage with folks, they let the the process play out. Then, when you close the hearing. Then you can go into discussion. You can continue to ask clarifying questions of the developer or staff. Um, but it is very much discouraged to continue to participate with the audience. And so it should be part of the discipline of the planning commissioner or any board. To make sure that the audience isn't shouting things out or getting into engagement with the planning commission after the close. Of the open record hearing in in which you guys are making your decisions.
Um, with that, um, I'll look to Loretta's question as well. Lori's question saying, you know, well, the developer promising all this stuff, that's where you have to kinda take that out and realize, okay, they may be saying, oh, they're putting in single-family residence. But that's really not, um, pertinent to what you are deciding. You're deciding whether that zone changes is correct and whether it's R two or wha- whatever that is, but. Their promises, again, aren't relevant, I guess. So it's something that you have to kinda take out of the equation, even if they are throwing it out.
And they, and they will. Uh, in in fact, there was, uh, you know, not too, too long ago. Um, there was a presentation or a request, uh. For a rezone to high density. And the developer was showing the planning commissioners all these great single-family homes. But their intention clearly within their CIPA was to do a high-density development. So it didn't matter what they were showing you over here. The the question was, what were they asking for? Well, they were asking for high density and the only thing that you're gonna put in high density is multifamily. And, uh, in this particular case. And so, yes, don't get distracted by what the developers, uh, are, are saying. And don't get distracted by what the public, the general public is saying as well. Focus on your mission, which is to. Follow the code and review the application for what it is. And, uh, it will always be difficult. I've never found a way to truly educate the public on the processes because passions. Are, you know, feelings and passions are at play here. People think, uh, they often fear change. And, um, with the advent of social media and some of the stuff, people are able to organize more around. Uh, around these sorts of things without putting in a lot of effort. However, it doesn't make them right, um, still. And so keep that in in mind as well. And some of the loudest critics of something. Uh, are are often the ones that will disappear the, the quickest when things go sour and litigation starts to come into play.
Also, the commission members should really avoid discussing. You know, any discussion if they're opposed to this or accept it, they're, they they discuss facts only. They don't want you. Or don't wanna say upfront, I'm against this, or I'm gonna oppose this. You have to discuss the facts correctly. And when it comes to voting, you can vote your opinion.
Yep.
Uh, because it could be, in a court of law, it can be led that someone lent or construed or impacted the votes. Or the commissioners agree.
Yep. And that's, again, goes back to creating a clean, uh, record.
I think part of what the commission has been struggling with, I hope you remember, we don't have an R one. I thought I tried to get an R one. So we got an R two, we go from Maxburg, my place. And this, the one that you were talking about down on Long River Road, I think the seventh. We didn't have an R one. So we had to go to R two and it's kind of incongruent with the neighborhood. An entire neighborhood came out and said, we don't want this, but. It went to R two and so we don't have the tools in our toolbox to say. Yeah, you can build there, but you shouldn't have that density next to a horse training facility. And people make a lot of money with horses and then the ag, anyhow, there's large pictures around there. So why, how do you? We don't have that tool in our box. Can we?
Well, actually you do.
Late now.
Actually, no, yeah, you actually do have that tool in your box. It's just a matter of timing. So you are the, uh, the. The workhorses of your comprehensive plan, which establishes your future land use. And so all rezones must be consistent with that future land use map. And so as the planning commission, you will be making recommendation and making testimony. Now, I say that with a grain of salt. In light of some, uh, last couple of years in which the state is, uh, consolidating power. Uh, away from local jurisdictions when it comes to zoning. So the R one under the, the, the deadline, which is December twenty twenty-six. Um, i- i- is almost a moot point, uh, with the requirement for ADUs, uh, which is coming.
Basically, I didn't understand that.
Uh, accessory dwelling units.
That is, but how is that to with this?
So all jurisdictions, if they're planning under GMA, which Benton City is. Will be required to allow every parcel up to two accessory dwelling units.
Okay. Two? Two? Are you kidding me? That's not even sane.
So there's a lot, yeah, for my profession, we're like, whoa, what happened to the whole Growth Management Act? That says that local jurisdictions should be deciding these things. Unfortunately. Uh, Olympia believes that the local jurisdictions are the problem to affordable housing. And so they are, uh, basically eliminating, uh, single-family zones, uh, in a roundabout way. Now, some jurisdictions, truly the single-family zones is going away if your population twenty-five thousand or more. Um, but that's not Benton City. The end run around that is ADUs. So you may think. Uh, you live in a nice, single-family neighborhood and then your neighbor now has two accessory dwelling units on his property. So they have basically a triplex, uh, of homes and they need not be attached either. So. That's all coming. Now, whether there are court challenges to that remains to be seen. Um, I don't, I haven't seen any jurisdiction stuff up to the plate on that one, but, um. Yeah, I I did write a, a very strong letter to the Department of Commerce telling them that this is the, this will not. A- actually solve affordable housing. It will actually drive people out of the, the buying market. And the, and how it will do that is, uh, you're gonna have corporate entities now coming into your depressed neighborhoods. Which are typically where, um, young people or low-income people buy as a fixer-upper and then. Put in their equity and and build that up. Well, all of those will be torn down to make way for these three units. And they will become part of corporate portfolios. So the depressed housing stock that was an opportunity for your low-income folks. To build some sweat equity and and discover homeownership is now, uh, unfortunately, it's gonna become the new gold rush for out-of-state interests.
The other side of this is, this is not something that will become part of the planning commission. This is an administrative review homework.
They what? I I didn't understand how that.
They don't have to go to planning commission because they're pretty much a shoo-in. You can't say no, as long as you meet our Benton City standards. They would just. Be allowed to start the permitting.
I just said, but that will come before the planning commission as part of the development. So what's, what are we reviewing here then?
That's why we asked Steve to come in. There's been so many changes. It was overwhelming to jump in when we took off, um, so we really do appreciate.
Well, you get an application for us, they aren't gonna have those on there?
No.
Not anymore, no.
Then why do we have planning commissions? I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, your planning commission is, still has an important function and that's to make sure that the rules that you do have in place that weren't taken away by Olympia. Are being followed. So.
But that one is just disruptive to towns. Oh, my lord, you cannot name.
I agree.
The city go through and increase the size of their lots. Is there anything in the state law that, that has kind of like there are two?
I have not found any.
The requirement is in state law is the ADUs have to meet the city setback.
Right.
So. And then we have the option to verify the utilities are sufficient by location.
So that may be one way to, you know, work around that big, big lots bigger, so when they.
So you can require, yeah, so the state has not limited that, but I will tell you that they did limit a little slew of other things. For example, off-street parking for the ADUs. If you are within one-half mile of a transit stop. You cannot require additional parking for the ADU.
What about coverage, uh, concrete?
Lot coverage, that that also has a limitation as well. Um, I could certainly, you, you guys have read it.
Yeah, but all too familiar.
It's, it's a longer list of things and.
Talking it down really.
There, you wanna cover some of the other changes in, on the short flats and some of the other stuff, operating divisions. In administrative review now.
Yeah, I could, I could go over so- some of that. That almost is in a, of itself.
Maybe another time.
That might be.
We're pushing the time.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm asking. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm asking to be quick.
Helping us all verify.
Right. So, a- and then the last little bit there on that slide is when in doubt, seek legal counsel. So, um, make sure you gotta, you're returning on speed dial, so yeah. Uh, what could you be subject to if you do make a bad choice? Um, constitutional taking, that just talks about what regulatory taking is, and that's when the government uh. Either physically takes property, that's a condemnation, or they take it or. Uh, limit the use with regulations. That essentially deprive that person of a lawful use of their property as a taking, so in other words, if your requirement. If your requirements on e- exactions or lot coverage, for example, um, can even potentially. Land you into the constitutional taking if your lot coverage exceeds what a person would find reasonable or a court would find reasonable.
Does that fall under imminent domain?
Imminent domain is the physical taking, that, that's the condemnation where the government's saying, we need this property to put a water tower here, you need to move. That's a physical taking and that's allowed. The co- the uh, regulatory taking is that you have something in your code or some sort of exaction that you're doing. It doesn't take the property, you're just telling that property or, oh yeah, you can put a manufactured home on your property, but you gotta build us an aquatic center. That's a regulatory taking, that's where you're not telling them they can't use their property, but you, in the roundabout way, you've told them. You can't use your property unless you give us oodles of money or. Yeah, definitely an overreach and then delay damages. Um, delay damages are determined on a case by case basis, and that's if uh, you know. You're, you've exceeded the uh, time allocated to review an application and you haven't gotten a determination back. Um, so a lot of the things in the world of planning have uh, start and stop. Buttons as far as a clock that typically runs ninety to a hundred and twenty days depending on the action. And so if you don't get to a yes or no within that time period, you could be subject to delay damages if uh. If something, i- if it comes out of planning commission and then it goes to council and then council. Sends it back to planning commission and then planning commission sends it back to council and you know, you're doing this ping pong thing, then that could also be delay damages. And I uh, create an example of just, you know, sort of, sort of some of the things that a developer could throw at it. Now, they can throw a lot of things in any sort of civil suit, but. Um, typically they will make the case that they've lost a lot of money or time and time is money. And uh, so that's just uh, important to avoid those um, those issues. Make sure you're following the timelines, follow your, your staff's recommendation on getting these things done. And uh, the biggest thing for planning commission, I know you're all volunteer board, make sure you show up to the meeting because delays in having a meeting or public hearing. Can also push you i- in- into the realm. So, uh, next slide please. All right, we got a quiz, look at that. So. Know by, does everyone know the answer? Shout them out, know by blank, know by what blank you act. Yep, or your code, know by what regulations you act, know by what authority you act, any, any of those words work. Nolan. Dolan is a pair of landmark Supreme cases that require governments to establish an essential ne- essential nexus reason. They just like to use fancy words uh, to any exaction requirement. And it requires it to be proportional to the impact, that's part of that two-part test. Um, can a planning commissioner be sued as an individual? Yes, they can.
Saskatchewan of limitations on that.
I'm not an expert on it, but I believe any civil is three years, but you might want to check with your attorney on that. I think it's a three-year limitation, so now I will say that Lupa appeals. Uh, they have twenty days from the date that a decision, now it is important, uh, uh, where we finish this up. Um, when a decision has been made, anybody who's testified to that uh, at the hearing. Needs to, the, the follow-up needs to come from staff. That the decision needs to be mailed to those individuals who testified. Otherwise, the statute of limitations does not stop on a Lupa appeal. So you have to close the, close the end, so. Um, everybody who comes and testifies before the planning commission or the city council. When a decision is reached, that written decision needs to be mailed out to each of those people that testify. So sometimes that's an overlooked step, but uh, a- and that's what starts the twenty day clock. Once they receive notice, that twenty day, they have twenty days to file a Lupa appeal.
So it's not like, uh, the city has liability insurance, though they wouldn't, that wouldn't cover us, so if we had to, if somebody sued us. They could like take our house or whatever, I mean, are we supposed to get liability insurance then doing this?
Edrops there.
Yeah.
On the staff or. Uh, the city's covered, you'll pick it up. If there were gross error or gross act of omission, then you get it.
As long as it's not intentional, you're pretty much okay.
Yeah.
City council's the same way.
Yes, my intention was not to scare anybody off the planning commission, so.
Body reviews applications, they accept the public testimony. That makes sure and raises any issues involved, makes the determination, does this meet the standards of law? Does this meet, does this all, you know, basically is it legal? There may be something that we totally dislike, but is legal.
One way to do that, and I've already seen some of the work that you guys shared with me, is a checklist, so. Uh, subdivisions are probably your most common thing, and so to simply take your municipal code. Where it says, these are the things that will be reviewed at the planning commission level and turning that into a checklist where you can go. I, that's checked off, that's checked off, that's checked off, puts you on good uh, ground as well. And then you're just basically reading from the code and uh, you're within your authority.
And we're printing a new one right now, if we can give it to you guys, you'll have it. During these proceedings, you have an active checklist that kind of help us go through serious events like created one for us as well, just cause I love a good checklist.
Sounds great. Yes, thanks.
For Steve giving it once over right now for us, make sure we didn't miss anything, but.
Yep, um, and so yeah, don't, don't be afraid and uh, you know. I would say, be afraid if you go, well, I don't like that person and I'm not going to vote for your subdivision. That's definitely outside of the authority, so. Um, and then your authority to review preliminary plots is usually contained in the local. That's one of them. Municipal code, yep, I heard it. Your municipal code, that's gonna have establishing rights. And then, uh, last question. Shout them out if you know them, is blank is one way to create a clean land use hearing record? Everyone's going back to their packet.
Rules.
Yep, establishing rules, um. Reading your packet, taking testimony and not entering uh, testimony into the record. Yep, so all of those things uh, go into the, the wheelhouse of creating a clean hearing record. Does everyone feel a little bit more knowledgeable on?
Yeah, actually, I think this has been really helpful, because we've all said things at some of the meetings, you know, I mean. There isn't anybody, maybe Ken.
Planning commissions uh, to, you know. These people are your friends, your family, your neighbors, and, and they're all up here telling you to do something that you. Already know and have the knowledge that maybe shouldn't be done, or you know, that you can't deny a specific application. And so you can be very sterile in your meeting and your process, that doesn't mean that after the meeting and after the hearing and after the business is, is done. That you can't then go engage and say, hey, look, I heard your, you know, after the meeting is all done, you know, and you're out in the parking lot, say, I, I heard you. And, and stuff, but we're constrained by these rules and you know, hey, have you heard about the Yellin', you know, and so uh. That's totally within the purview of the planning commission, but until such time that a decision is rendered and forwarded on. I, you know, I would keep things very. Yes, so.
And what you're doing, like I mentioned earlier, you're looking to make sure it's legal. Also, you're looking, is there a legal reason why this should be denied? You're also looking for that, is there a legal reason for denial? And it has to be a, a reason that will hold up any court of law. And that is a pretty high standard.
That will be our place to help guide you in that, and what, you know, what your legal options are.
So your staff is an, an important tool in that, and uh, the staff report. Um, are you doing staff reports to company? Your staff report is critical and then your findings are critical. Now, I don't know, I, I know the council's not here, but um, if something, uh, for example, you've. You've established your findings, you've taken the hearing and you forwarded all that to the council and the council says, huh, you know, we're gonna send it back. Anything that comes back to the planning commission should come back with findings that they have created to establish why it's coming back. A- and so read that too, when it, when it, it comes back, i- if it comes back, I don't know if that happens a lot or. Or whatnot, but. Yeah, everything, every decision in quasi judicial matters should come with findings. And so when you create your record, you're sending your findings uh, saying, hey, we've reviewed all of this and it's, we think it's a good plot, it meets the rules. And if anybody or wants to deviate from that, then they need to establish. Their own findings to justify why something should deviate or whatnot. So findings are your record that needs to follow each of the decisions, so. Anyway, uh, any questions? So, how long? A little bit longer than I was intending, so. I, I didn't mean to.
Really into this, continue in education stuff.
Yeah, we used to have it all the time, it was really helpful and then it just kind of stopped.
Okay, we don't have a planning. We don't have planner anymore, oh, are you gonna speak tonight?
Uh, briefly, yes, a few things I just wanted to, to bring up, so um. Uh, I know we don't have a planner report, cause there's nothing to report this, this meeting, but the next one, we will, will have quite a bit and we do plan on getting you guys out of the packets. Um, uh, you know, in advance for you to review those. I know previously packets have been uh, printed in hard copy and, and put in your mailboxes. We would prefer to go to an email uh, process where we can email them to you.
I think we can adjust, but no. You don't want to do that yet, we'll, we'll have to.
We'll continue to provide hard copies and is that consensus for everyone, um, it, it is. You know, it takes some time and effort to send all those out, so.
Calendar notice sometimes is helpful, because sometimes I'm like, today, but I usually put it on my calendar, but a calendar invite.
We can send a calendar invite, definitely.
Yeah, I do try to make sure I update the calendar, but.
Yeah, I, I, I live off of my calendar, so that's not a problem, I'll, I'll send calendar invites out.
Then you could, for me, you could attach files and I would be perfectly happy with that, because I. I view rigid files a day, so.
And I do think you could do the mixed version, but I'm telling you, Michelle, you better get her hard copy, you better be there on time. You better put it in the right spot, and you're new.
Thank you. For the insight, yes. All right, so we'll continue with hard copies, but we also will mail out copies and we'll set up a calendar invite. It will be a standing meeting, um. Uh, at this point, I'm able to set up a standing meeting on the second Monday of each month, so that's what will be set up. I will say that if there is no business on a planning commission, then those meeting, that meeting would be canceled. Um, I think it's a requirement, we have eight or nine a year, and so if there's no business, then, you know, we'll cancel that meeting. Uh, for that month if there's nothing to discuss, but the way we're growing, um, well, I look at it two ways, the way we're growing. There's going to be continued applications, however, a lot of things are going to administrative review. So we're, we're going to that point where there's a lot. Less that you will be looking at than what you've looked at in the past. You know, considerably things like ADUs like we discussed, um, some of the boundary line adjustments and variances, those things are going to administrative review. Based on state legislature and state requirements, so.
Years ago, um, first year I was on the commission, we had this company that they contracted with that. You know, kind of helped and reviewed and did education, they, we had this whole training on, you know, how, how many feet, how many, you know, what size lots. Were minimum, how many glazed windows, you know, how much glass had to be in the front and the back and, you know, and that kind of stuff, like. Where the garages were and how they were set, yeah, I mean, there was all, so it gave us some guidelines and then they'd like quit or we fired them or something anyway. They're not here anymore, and now we have nothing, and so that's, I mean, I don't know if that's something that. Could happen again or what, but it helps.
Yeah, the, the good question and, and good points, I think uh, what I'd like to do, if you guys don't mind, is we are working on some checklists. You know, Zach's kind of spearheading that and I think that would be a good place to start and coordinating with, with um, Steve. And, and Zach and myself and even Alan, our engineer on um, the things that, that commission does review. And what tools they need, and let, let's, let's work on coordinating that together, we'll work on that and again, states put a lot of things in place where. There's a lot you're not going to review anymore, a lot you're not going to look at, but we can put together the checklist for the things that you will. And so that when, when things are brought to you, again, you've got a checklist. We've got the checklist too, and we're planning on having things resolved before it comes to you, you know, or having recommendations. We've already required a traffic impact study possibly, or you know, we've already reviewed easements and easements meet our code requirements. So we're planning on having those things prepared for you in advance, but I think the checklist would be a good tool to just go off, okay, yeah, we checked that. Well, you know, you said you did this, but can you show me how? That's fine, if you have questions, we'll clarify, but um, I think that would just give us a good place to stand. Um, we want to make sure the city's protected. We want to make sure that what we're doing falls within the confines of, again, the authority that we have. Um, we don't want to get in a place like Clealum. Um, and uh, so we're working hard to make sure that we're compliant again with. Our new state laws and also our, our local laws that we've put in place, so. Um, we will continue to work on that together, but we'll start with these checklists, so next com- next meeting. Uh, you should have a checklist to follow as we're going through the items for review, which there will be uh, quite a few items as we've been kind of. Digging through records and finding what needs to come up for council.
I mean, two points that, that we hear most of the time, and again, it's. Uh, uh, with what you're saying tonight, we, it doesn't, we don't really address it, it's traffic flow and. You know, the width of the roads and people getting out like onto Babs first, you know, from like six, seven of those areas and stuff like that. And the other thing is, is the water, I have the idea with the well and stuff, and I've had. I have a lot of plants and stuff, it's from my water, people are stopping at my front door all the, all the time, they were, you know, saying. Well, my son's well, he lives on River Road, it's gone down nine feet, what are you guys gonna do with that with all those new plant, places going in and stuff and. And he, you know.
Those are definitely evaluated, I will tell you that, all of our, you know, short plaz, development plaz, as they go through. Um, our engineer looks at those, you know, right now, we're, we're, we're sitting good on our capacity, water and sewer, you know. When that other side opens up on the other side of the freeway, that's, that's a different question, but at this point, we're, we're still well under capacity. And those things are reviewed, um, I know that our wells aren't always tied to folks' wells, you know, we're, we're running different aquifers, deeper aquifers. But we are, we, we do evaluate those things, so those are things that would come to you already. Uh, with, yeah, I mean, we're, we're not going to come to you with something where we haven't looked already and verified, we've got, we've got adequate water. Or sewer capacity for these developments, it, it, it wouldn't even come to you before, you know, we'd already go back to the developer and, and say. You know, you've got to come up with a solution for this, or it's just not going to work, so. Um, I think again, that's where that checklist is really going to help, where one, it's going to guide you on questions you can ask, cause you, even if we've done it, you can ask it. You know, but the checklist will be there, did we evaluate water and sewer capacity? Yes, are we, you know, are we covered? So those checklists will help us that tool as well, and then, yeah, if you need to verify, that's no problem, so. Um, one other thing I did want to bring up is uh, we are working on our comp plan, we've got an update this year and it's, it's. We've kind of completed phase one, which is, which is a draft, um, starting the public record hearing process. And uh, Alan would like to set up a workshop, I know Alan, if you wanted to come talk a little bit.
Sure.
On that. There's enough, enough room for all of us.
Oh, good evening, everyone, if you don't know me, I'm Alan Rainey and I work with Akana. Engineering, we work as your city engineer and uh, been. Engineering. We work as your city engineer and uh, been actually working here for. Uh, about twenty years now, so, um. We are updating your comp plan and through as part of the uh, uh, grant that was given by Department of Commerce. So we went through a series of deliverables that they re- required for the first year. That was up through. Um, July of this year. And now we have. Well, it, it's kind of been extended, but we have from now until the end of twenty twenty-six to complete it. But the county has not changed their deadline dates. Um, so we're on a kind of a big push to get the comp plan. Uh, updated into at least a draft form that will be submitted to the county. Uh, they are looking for their applications. Um, about mid, mid November to begin of December. Sounds like a little bit of time, but actually to, to go through the process of uh, getting public input. Um, and then updating the comp plan is gonna be a, a hard push. And so, as part of that, we're looking at um, goal setting. Uh, that's setting your goals, th- they're listed in your comp plan. And uh, m- my proposal this time is to take all the goals that are in the comp plan. Um, I think the last time it was updated was twenty-one.
Um, seventeen.
Seventeen was the full date, but there was some kind of amendment, I think in the meantime, but. Oh, could be, could be, yeah. So, so, um. So I would, was proposing to try to do the uh, uh, a portion of the. Uh, public participation and do a workshop within the next few weeks. I don't know if you guys would be available to do that. It'd be on Monday night as we are right here. And uh, and through this, um, we call it the dot exercise. So. We will post all the goals and policies up on the wall and whoever's here. Will have the opportunity to basically go up and vote on which they think is most important.
That's so ecology.
But you know what? And everybody says it's like kindergarten all over again, but uh. But it does give you a chance to really look at it and, and you can see when you step back. And hopefully we get uh, more people here, um, and you can see what, what people are thinking and what's important. So you guys would be all right, um. Okay. So.
We've, we've got big screens.
So should we? In two weeks then? Which would be.
What, what day? The twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Hope that works for all of you. I can send an invite out on that as well. From Monday the twenty-fifth.
And that's just for the workshop, right?
That's just for the workshop, yeah.
At six thirty. Do that, so, um, comp plan workshop.
Well, random question, um. I don't know who to ask, but. They're having problems with the groundwater down on um, Laurel River, Seventh Street. Um, all right, can, uh, people put in, if they have wells, can they either. Refurb the wells they have, like drill deeper or drill a new domestic or livestock? Well, so they don't have to buy city water. Um, for livestock. And I wasn't sure if it was livestock.
Hmm, yeah, for livestock. I, I think that's something I, I'd need to look into or really need to look into and get those answers specifically. Depends on where they live. Obviously, city limits only goes so far on that road.
So it would depend on how close they are to our certain water and then after that it would be more of a department and health ecology, but.
Okay, cuz I, and that's what I was wondering.
Unfortunately, they are gonna be most likely forced if it's happening to city water, but that's only if they're within, I believe it's two hundred feet or city.
Yeah, so it's kind of reviewing per law.
Yeah, so yes and no, depending on.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because I went to section my pasture off and keep stock on the back half and I can't do that.
Well, we put it for the twenty-fifth.
So that's why I was asking, because.
And that would be something I think we'd have to follow up with Department of Health, but if, if it's referred to as a livestock well, ma- maybe, I don't know. Honestly, that's a new question for me. That falls under different requirement, so something we'd have.
Well, they have a different person there. I talked to the health personally that when. Um, but that was like. Twenty-five years ago. There's somebody there, so they allow domestic wells. Somebody, and I'll let you know because I called because I'm from, wow, either with the groundwater or my well. Groundwater level thinking and they were more than willing to come out here and drill me well. That's, you know, because there's gonna be other people down the road that are gonna be in the same predicament with me.
Right.
I know like some of the cities, and, and it's not like this now, but some of the other cities, they charge by volume. That can be enormous. And, you know, in the future, if the city decides to switch over, which. And thanks for that.
Anything else?
I don't have any. Are we done? Anybody else? Question? You're really quiet. Okay, maybe close.
Move to adjourn.
Well, I did, okay. Somebody make a motion. Are we gonna?
I moved to adjourn.